All right, we'll call to order our regular planning commission meeting for November 5th. First order of business is our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can you roll call?
Ms. Dobson?
Here.
Mr. Denny? Mr. Earhart?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Pollum?
Here.
Mr. Sly? Ms. Squire?
Here.
Mr. Welsh?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Get approval of the agenda as it stands?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been stated and seconded. Start voting on the left?
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. All right, this moment is opened up for citizen participation. Looks like we have one person that wants to come up and talk. Steven Boswell. The floor is yours.
Kansas, there we go. I live in the older part of Spring Hill, mostly, I believe that's what, west direction from here? And as we drive, as I drive home from work every day, I notice that the roads are worse and worse shape. I take my animals on walks around the blocks, et cetera, and so on. The next block over has part of the street falling off literally into the ditch. And, you know, I know there's certain expectations of us as citizens to, you know, work on maintaining properties, et cetera, and so on. But what do we have expect, my question, or well, it's not really a question, but shouldn't the citizens expect the city to also take care of our streets? I'd like you guys maybe to discuss this, look around the streets and see what you think about bringing up maybe an idea to the city council about starting to do some actual major roadwork in the older community. Because as our taxes keep going up, our property taxes keep going up, we have nothing to show for it. We don't have any, our roads are literally falling into the ditches almost everywhere. And I don't think that's fair to the citizens on this side of Spring Hill. So I'd like to see if there is something that can be done to do some improvements in that area. That's all I really wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business is the approval of the minutes from October 1st.
I move that we approve the minutes from October 1st.
Second it.
It's in motion and seconded. Voting from the left?
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes six zero. All right, we have final plat 000032-2020 Prairie Ridge of Spring Hill number four. Mr. Burton, you have the floor?
Thank you, good evening. Thank you all for joining us tonight. What we have is another phase of Prairie Ridge. It's at this, well Prairie Ridge is on the east side of the high school. Barstow and 160, or 196 place and terrace there, I probably believe. And the, you see on the the page two of the report, it shows that phase line on there. And just a little bit of background is this is the next phase of Prairie Ridge. This consists of thirty-eight residential lots and one track, about twelve point five five one plus or minus. In August 17th, planning commission voted to recommend approval of the third plat. And it contained thirty and a parcel. In that third plat as well as the second plat, there were walking, walking trail with the track. The second and third plat has a walking trail with some plantings and trees and things of that nature. This plat will continue the walking trail through track A. Applicant has submitted all the drawings, the waterline drawings and all sewer line, they're being worked with the city engineer on that. The utility providers and all other staff and government entities have been notified. And the, what they have, there has been no comments, and what comments have come in? The engineer, it's already in the plat. They either missed it or it was already a part of the plat. The taxes are paid. Journey gerrys are subject to the maintenance of the adjoining homeowner association as well as all the trees, plantings and sidewalk or walking trail, I'm sorry. Public improvements are adequate to the site. It's required that they have an improvement agreement with also the excise tax paid. All bonding and issuing those documents prior to the council meeting. This final plat is subject to three hundred dollar per lot park impact fee. Although the residents can, and this was prior to me, but all of the residents can utilize, the general public can utilize it, the developer to help the community and all. And he is, the builders are paying the three hundred dollars per lot. Which, you know, we don't get many builders and developers that will do that, but that's just to help out the park system as a whole. And they still allow the public to utilize the walking trails. Not the pool, but we're working on that. Staff finds it in compliance with the approved preliminary plat and all the comprehensive plan. The planning commission recommended approval to the governing body, deny and notify the applicant or table it to a specific date. Staff recommends approval of plat thirty-two twenty twenty Prairie Ridge at Spring Hill number four.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Do we have any questions or discussion, Mr. Burton? Get a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat application zero 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 three two dash two zero two zero.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the approval of final plat application zero 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 three two two zero two zero Prairie Ridge at Spring Hill number four. Starting voting on the left?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes six zero. All right, our next order of business is final plat zero 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 two seven twenty twenty Brookwood Farms number six plat. Mr. Burton, you have the floor?
I guess we better just leave it on. Thank you again. This is the plat that the planning commission reviewed a couple of meetings ago where it just dead end and the drain where it falls off, it makes it hard for the adjacent property owner to the south as well as this property owner. So in direction of the planning commission, staff went in and worked with the engineer and the developer, and this is the cul-de-sac that came up. So you have fourteen lots and then the one track. And it works out well with the cul-de-sac as you can see that down at the south, the track ties into their existing pond area and the walking trail is around the pond now. And they're going to extend this off and I'm not exactly sure what they're going to do there, but they'll put in something down below there. It's really hard to work with in that area just because of the drainage and all. So overall, it meets a preliminary plat and by it did show that this road was supposed to go through and then the planning commission asked that it be revised at the meeting. You can see the revised plat, obviously, the pond area and all. In red on your staff report on page six and all, I had placed the changes. Everything else has remained the same. Planning commission, they do pay the three hundred dollars per lot. The planning commission recommendation approval to the governing body, deny to the governing body and notify the applicant or table it to a specific time and date and notify the applicant. In the recommendations, it's recommended by the staff, the planning commission give approval to it and send it to the council on the revised and, and you don't have to say revised, it's, it's just, I just put that in there so that it keeps the staff report the same. Of plat twenty-seven twenty twenty Brookwood Farms sixth.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Do you have any questions or discussion, Ms. Burton?
No, I think it looks good after we had that talked about. This looks like a good solution to me.
I agree. Just, any, any ideas as to what they would do down in that area? Would it just be like a natural wildlife or wild?
Right, and they talked about maybe it'd be a good area for a gazebo.
Okay.
You know, down there, so that if it did flood, there wouldn't be, I mean, you know, no damage to property per se. So we're going to look at it together after the dirt work, the initial dirt work is completed before the streets are started to be paved and all, and see if there's something that we can do there. And maybe a short retain well, we're not sure, to be real honest with you. So, but it does work in, tied in well with the pond area and all.
So it would be something that would be mowed and maintained?
Oh, it is, yes, I'm sorry. All of the items are applicable that are in the staff report. I just didn't take my time and go through it because
No, it's okay. I just didn't know if it would be
It will be maintained by
wetland area that would just
It'll be maintained by the
Natural wildflowers or
And I think that'd be something that would be reasonable, but it will be maintained by the home association.
A gazebo would be nice. I mean, that might be something that would be used by
Oh, sure. The, by the home association or the members of the subdivision. You know, they have put in the trails around the pond and all that, and we're working on a a couple of right-of-way permits for some handicap ramps into the street areas and things like that.
It looks, it looks much better.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if they plan to do a trail, a access to the pond trail, a connection from that cul-de-sac?
Right, so if you look at the bottom of one twenty-five or six? What is that, one seventy-six? Is that correct? One seventy-five?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five up against there. The talk is to come off of that short jog right there and come across with a trail. Or with a, actually, they pour concrete sidewalk type structures. And, and the reason that we're, we've discussed it right in that area is because of the grade, you know, it's going to fall off in the south pretty quick. But that discussion has already started with them.
All right, any more discussion? Looking for a motion?
I move to recommend approval of plat zero 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 two seven dash two zero two zero Final Platform Brookwood Farms six plat, subject to staff report.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second for the final plat twenty-seven twenty twenty Brookwood Farms number six plat as presented by staff. Getting a voting from the left?
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That passes six zero. All right, our next order of business is a public hearing for the rezoning application. Just kind of give everybody in the public what we're going to do here. I'm going to open it up for the, the public hearing. We're going to ask if any of the members of the board have any ex parte contact. They'll describe what that is. The staff will present the report and comments regarding the case, applicant or the agent. Can also make a brief presentation. The commission members will ask if any needed clarification. Public comments are solicited from the audience. We'll ask for any, the board again can ask for any more clarification. We'll close the hearing, we'll deliberate and then, then we'll vote. There's a fourteen day protest period beginning after the planning commission public hearing is closed. So that being said, go ahead and open it up for the public hearing. And ask any of the members if they have ex parte communication or contact.
I don't.
Okay. All right, Mr. Burton?
Thank you. This is a rezoning twenty-eight twenty twenty. It's rezoning from RR to M1. The general location is one hundred and eighty-third and one sixty-nine and also Webster. The applicant, Russell Davis, the owner is Mr. Arthur Jensen. And Steve Jensen, his son represents his dad, Arthur. Phelps Engineering. And tonight we have Doug Uben. Hope I didn't boost you. Sorry, Doug. So it's, it's a ten acre piece. A little bit of background. They've requested the rezoning. The area is to the south of that is already zoned and to the east is already zoned M1. So they are trying to change this to M1. In the zoning, Golden versus the City Overland Park, the fourteen steps and questions in, in this one, all are consistent. The proposed zoning is consistent with the area, the neighborhood characteristics. It is a highway and Webster's is considered a collector street or, yes, a major collector street. The adjacent zonings for all of it are, around it are industrial. Across the highway is R1, but the highway that it's considered a major highway, not an interstate, but a highway. Suitable for the current zoning, the R1 district, the residential, it basically, it stands out on its own there with all the industrial, the M1 zoning that's in the area. There is already construction in the M1 zoning. And then you approved Phase Two of the commons. And they are starting to put the improvements in. There are quite a ways into putting the improvements in now. And then we've already received a building permit application and we're reviewing that. Obviously, we cannot issue the permit until the improvements are in and accepted. But we're get, everyone wants to get a jump on it and they want to get it going on it. So there is a lot of activity in the area and the storage units that were approved a couple years ago, maybe three years ago, for the RV storage is what it was classified as. They continue to build. They're ahead of schedule is what they, as to what they thought they would have been. They're getting ready to finish up another building right now. So there's a lot of industrial zoning type use activity in the area. And the future land use plan does call out this area to be industrial. Request of the change is based on a business model. Suitability for the parcel, as I've kind of explained, it's, it's in the, as I have explained, it's in the all surrounded by industrial zoning and also shown in the comprehensive plan. There, we see no detrimental effect because of all the adjacent M1. There is no corrections being made. The length of time, when this Jensen property was brought into the city, it was a rural residential zoning, so it was brought into the city as close a classification as the city has, which is RR, so it came in just almost on peg with it. There are current facilities there. There will have to be a sewer extension through there. Public gain is, you know, as, as usual, we see by the comprehensive plan that it was always planned to be industrial and that we can, through the permitting process and the site plan process, you know, we can hopefully help the aesthetic values and all of it by what we've done before. Requiring some additional look on the buildings. Hardship, the owner would and, or the applicant actually would have to and the owner talk about that, but it, it doesn't seem to play any role in the hardship of the applicant if it's denied, I'm sorry. And then, of course, it does conform to the comprehensive plan. There's, it's a forty-one acre, forty-one point eight acre. It looks like that the proposal on the next agenda item would be that it would be divided into, it would be platted into two lots, one being a ten acre lot and the other one obviously being the balance of twenty-one point eight acres. It's recommended by staff to approve the rezoning. The planning commission actions, it can be approved and sent to the governing body for November, and yeah, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. For the council members to take that up, deny and send it to the same council meeting, November twenty-fourth. Or continue it for future meeting, for a future meeting and identify the specific reasons to the staff and applicant. And it is suggested by staff that the planning commission does approve this and send it on to the governing body.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Does the applicant have any presentation or does he want to say anything?
I'll, I will ask. Do you want to just wait for questions or do you have a presentation? Okay, so I think we'll continue and then if we have specific questions for him, we can ask him. And as well as the engineer is here as well. Thank you.
Not sure we have any questions?
I mean, it looks like it's Yeah, it's Well, they're using it for what it was designed for. Yeah, it's an island by itself right now, so it makes sense.
Yeah, seems reasonable to me. Do we have?
I said it's on an island by itself right now that Jason's land use would be the same or zoning.
Okay. At this point, do we have anybody in the public that wants to speak on this agenda item? Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. And did we have any other discussion that we wanted to do on this? All right, just looking for a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the Spring Hill governing body for rezoning application Z zero 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 two eight dash twenty twenty as presented by staff.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve this, the rezoning application Z zero 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 two eight twenty twenty as presented by staff. We'll start the voting to the left.
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes six zero. All right, our next agenda item is preliminary plat thirty-three twenty twenty Jensen subdivision. Mr. Burton, you have the floor?
Thank you again. I briefly touched on this in the rezoning. It is a forty-one acre and they are plotting out, well, it's all preliminary platted and then on the next agenda item is a final plat for ten acres. As you can see in the ten acre, they have some utility easements there for the sewer, proposed sewer to go through. All of the easements and all are platted or are proposed on the, on the plat. And the stormwater, they've shown. And then we'll also have a site plan, but the stormwater removal will, on the streets and all, and that will all have to be taken into consideration. A traffic impact study may be required, but the type of use typically does not require A traffic impact study may be required, but the type of use, uh, typically does not require a, a traffic impact study. Um, like I said, the sanitary sewer will need to be extended. The excise tax will need to be calculated, it is calculated, uh, but it will need to be paid before the recording of the plat. On the planning commission, approve of the application, uh, approve of the application with modifications. Table it and notify the applicant or just reject the application. Um, and staff recommends approval of preliminary plat thirty three, twenty twenty for the Jensen's subdivision preliminary plat.
Mr. Burton, do we have any discussion? All right, looking for a motion then?
Motion to re- recommend approval for preliminary plat application, plat thirty three dash twenty twenty for the Jensen subdivision.
All right, we have a motion and a second for preliminary plat application thirty three, twenty twenty for the Jensen subdivision. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Passes six, zero. All right, our next item is gonna be final plat, uh, thirty five, twenty twenty Jensen subdivision. Mr. Burton, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um, we just can keep in succession on this. So this is for the, uh, ten acre, uh, one lot plat, final plat. Um, all the prudent information is the same, as you can see on there, the, uh, sewer, uh, plat or the sewer line location, plating of the, of the easements, all the easements. Now, it does say, you know, there's a twenty foot utility easement all the way around. On the south, there's already an existing ten foot utility easement on Cummins property, so that's why there's not a full twenty foot there. It's a shared easement, a shared twenty foot. We, we're trying to do that, uh, cause right now we're working, just to give you a quick, brief synopsis of why. Uh, out at Dayton Creek, it was, uh, platted with forty foot on one of them. And it, it really did affect the house that they wanted to put on there. And actually what it was is they wanted to cover the porch and was not able to because of this huge easement. So we're going through a, um, process right now to amend the size of the easement so that they'll be able to place this on there. Uh, because, you know, the utilities, and actually, the utilities had gone in on the phase before, so there's absolutely nothing in the easement at all. So I'm, I'm trying to watch now where if there's a ten on one side, we'll only require a ten on the adjoining, so there's full twenty. Um, that was just a quick, brief on it. So, uh, like I said, it's a one lot, all the, um, drawings and all need to go to the engineer, uh, city engineer for approval. Obviously, all the improvements will need to be put in before building permit is offered or, uh, allowed. The, um, all the uh, consultants, as well as utilities and all, and the other governing bodies have been, um, consulted on this and we, you know, we had some comments from the engineer, but all those comments are are basically, are to do with the infrastructure being put in. So those will be addressed, like he said, you know, uh, depth of manhole and things of that nature, so those, those are not prudent to this plat, plating process. We verified the owners, again, the taxes are paid, um, drainage areas are going to be uh, maintained by the development association or the owner. Facilities are, public facilities are ad- adequate. There will be an improvement agreement. When along with the improvement agreement, uh, excise tax of approximately sixty nine thousand. And then also every, um, building permit and commercial is subject to a ten cent, uh, square foot park impact fee of approximately forty three five, forty three thousand, five hundred. And staff finds it's in compliance with, obviously, the preliminary plat that was already approved, as well as the comp plan and all the um, subdivision regulations for the city of Spring Hill. The planning commission's review and actions, uh, they can recommend the, uh, approval of the application to the governing body, denial to the governing body, notify the applicant and staff. Table it to a specific date and time and, and obviously, uh, notify the applicant. And staff recommends approval of, uh, plat thirty, twenty, twenty Jensen subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Do we have any discussion on this agenda item? Looking for a motion then?
I guess I'm, I ha- I mean, I may be in the wrong spot here, but is this intended to be this ten acres, is this intended to be the office part of what we're cap- is coming up or?
Uh, no, it's, no, it, we have a site plan shown in the next, uh, agenda item. Well, to give you an idea, uh, the parcel with the, um, RV storage, and that is a twenty acre parcel, that's twenty acre parcel. So ten acres is a pretty big, pretty good size piece.
I, I'm just, okay.
What's your concern?
Yeah, please.
I guess I, my understanding is this is intended to be a home. Is that correct? The ten acres?
Oh, no, 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 on this, the next item is the site plan and all for this ten acres.
I guess I didn't.
It's gonna be mini storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this is all that industrial that we just got done rezoning.
Right, so the house that you are referring to up there, it will remain on the, uh, remainder of the property thirty one eight, thirty one point eight acres.
Okay.
And then when the, when the, uh, it gets ready, and, and they're working on some plating of that right now.
Okay.
It's just timing and a lot of that will actually be, um, disappeared.
Okay, I'm, I'm following it now.
Okay. Mary Dean, and there's a house that sits on the other property, okay.
Yeah.
All right, looking for a motion?
I move that we recommend the approval of final plat application of Jensen subdivision plat thirty five, twenty twenty as presented by staff.
Seconded.
And we have a motion and seconded to approve final plat application of Jensen subdivision. Plat thirty five, twenty twenty as presented by staff. We'll start the voting on the left.
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Passes six, zero. All right, our next agenda item is site plan, uh, SP thirty six, twenty twenty, one sixty nine boat, RV and mini storage. Mr. Burton, you have the floor.
You guys are wearing me out.
Well, stop walking back and save yourself some footsteps.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid I'll fall down, so I'm just standing here now. Thank you again. So this is, uh, the next progression in what we've been doing tonight, and this is the site plan. Uh, this is for outside storage and as well as buildings. So if you look at the site plan, I, I can go through a little bit of this. This is a RV boat type covered storage and then some outside storage. The zoning obviously, uh, should pass through, you know, we obviously have to wait for the protest period. Sanitary sewer is okay, stormwater is shown on the plans. Um, I do want to talk about, uh, the stormwater while we're here. So as, as indicated on the plans, that, uh, gravel is shown through the entire site. Uh, we put on there that staff believes that the driveway from east off of Webster to the, pretty close to the end of the property or the last building to the west, where it says a monument sign also on the end of the building, that, that needs to be hard surface. Now, that was also a requirement that was asked for by public safety. Uh, that they had some hard surface to pull in on, uh, through that area. Especially an ambulance call or something like that with a gurney, they would only have to carry the people so far and it's easier to put them into ambulance and uh, all that. So the, the remainder of it though, uh, with the uh, gravel surface and obviously, uh, gravel works better to slow down the stormwater runoff. I spoke with Dan Miller about it and we're constantly fighting stormwater runoff. On these types of uses, uh, you know, he does not see any problem with using gravel base and all to, and we've allowed it in several places or several types of uses like this, as well as storage yards and things like that. So I wanted to bring that up to you though, and what, uh, in, um, number four under staff comments is what that comment was leading or for. And also, I, I know that the engineer and applicant would like to speak on comment for, um, I don't know if you want to do it now or while we're talking about it, or if you want to go on with the report and come back to it, Mr. Chairman.
Um, speaking of, just go ahead and let him speak if they want to.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Doug Evans with Phelps Engineering, uh, civil engineer for the project. Got Russ Davis with me here, he's the applicant and, uh, potential owner of this property to, to develop it as a storage, you see. Uh, just to kind of piggyback on what, uh, what Pat's saying there, to, you know, none of these buildings are occupied space, there's no office space in them. Um, so to put a, you know, that north property line where they, we're asking me hard surface, that's about twelve hundred feet long and uh, Mr. Davis intends to build this out in phases and starting up at the highway for visibility, so put a hard surface all the way along that north property line for twelve hundred feet. Um, just to get to the very first building is quite a financial burden on them. Um, and one I do, I don't see necessary for buildings that don't have any occupied space in them, so I just kind of wanted to ask for, uh, that stipulation to be edited, did not require that hard surface on the north property line.
Okay, thank you.
And so to clarify, uh, the statement would not have to be edited, you could literally just approve the plan as it is because it does show gravel there, so. And, and in all fairness, it, in starting with phases and all, I mean, we could probably, or, or we could phase this in where, you know, we say, okay, when you did get to the outside storage just past the east side of the outside storage, where there's two buildings left and you see, then you'd be required to pave that. Um, I just think that, uh, fully built out is just a requirement that was asked for um, by the, uh, I say public safety is EMS and, um, fire, so. Okay, so going on. Uh, the second entrance, according to the fire department, uh, can be locked, but the fire department, and I say second entrance. Uh, they're classifying the south entrance as a second entrance. Uh, the fire department did, it, uh, can remain locked, but the fire department must have access to it. Um, there is most likely going to be some, um, off-site grading uh, for the stormwater infrastructure and there shouldn't, there is no problem in obtaining easements for that. Uh, the retaining wall, uh, because of the abrupt changes there on the southeast corner, um, that, uh, we're gonna look at that on height wise and all when it's constructed and see if there's a safety measure there, but that will be implemented during the building permit, uh, phases, which usually typically always is, uh, but no matter what, there, uh, the additional plantings around that and the detention. Uh, the photometrics on it, as you can see on the north side, every one that's indicated with an M, those are streetlights. Uh, we will look at that at the building permit application period, and especially on this project, because most likely they won't put them all in at one time, and even if they do, you know, we'll look at the type of, uh, light fixture that they're gonna use and make sure that the photometrics will work on that. There is a, uh, again, to reiterate, because this also falls with the, just the building permit, uh, there is the ten cents a square foot, a park impact fee. Uh, obviously, the excise tax, the excise tax has to be paid with the plat, so that's why it's not on here again, cause this is the site plan. So in, um, with that, the recommend, uh, the actions can be recommend approval to the governing body, deny to the governing body and tell the applicant and such, and, or table it to a specific date and time and notify the applicant and staff. Staff recommends approval of the, um, site plan thirty six, twenty twenty.
Chad, will you tell me what, I, this is real hard for me to read, sorry.
No, that's fine.
P on the bottom of the building and the H on the bottom of the site plan?
Uh, the, the P?
It looks like a P.
Uh, F.
Okay.
That's the fence. H is that retaining wall.
Okay. It's hard on here to read.
I understand.
Not that my eyes are old.
Um, Mr. Burton, we were talking about the hard surface of the road.
Yes.
Uh, and I've only been in this, um, near this storage unit, uh, from the road, so the existing boat and RV storage, it's all there on, off of one sixty nine.
Yes.
I don't believe I've ever seen them actually have hard surface roads.
No.
Through that either.
No, and so, a little bit of background. The fire department now has taken an active role in the participation of site plan review.
So are the new buildings like the other ones or are they gonna have?
No, these will be closed in and they are going to have, um, uh, rock and stone on them. And so one thing that I was going to and, and mentioning to you is that we are going to bring back the, um, actual elevations for approval. Uh, there were some changes that are being made on it, uh, as far as making it more aesthetically pleasing. But it, it should not affect the actual site plan looking down on it. And we'll just have to work with some of the elevations of it that's aesthetics of it.
So those many storage units, they're gonna have gravel flooring?
No, 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 they, they'll be concreted. That's correct. I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question then.
And it looks like we'll have one section that's open?
The middle, that's correct.
Well, I would definitely say if we're looking at the paved, that it would be something that would come later because you're gonna want the
I understand.
Gravel to settle in anyhow.
Right, and.
You're gonna need some of that to.
Right, and staff can work with that, we just have to get guidance from, or approval from the planning commission on that.
I agree with the, it being paved. There is an accident, then the fire department does have a hard time on gravel. I've experienced it, I've been there and done it, and it's, it's awful.
Right, and they're, uh, like I said, their main concern was EMS. And, and staff, you know, it's not any problem, every time a permit is issued on a project, any type of project that is ongoing in phases. Staff goes back, reviews the site plans, the comments and all before issuing the permit. Um, it, we just have to, I mean, because there's enough going on, and now I keep it all up here, but.
Could we do a motion where? Could we do a motion where, you know, as because they're doing us in phases and they're gonna be adding on to this that. Eventually they would have to put it in there as they go through the phases that we just.
Yes, and what we would like, um, and and I'm sure the owner would also. Is a definite indicator when you hit the last two buildings, let's say. That's what the triggering mechanism is what I'm getting at. So it's not a guessing game, everyone knows where they stand and knows at what point.
And when you say the last two buildings like as in.
I would say to the east. Yes.
Construction of those last two buildings.
That's correct. Or the last building, I just use that as an indicator and. What the, what the planning commission feels comfortable with.
What if those buildings never get built in?
Think we should have a little bit of a, well, no, that's not true. As long as planning commission says, okay, hey, there has to be a hard surface or whether it be asphalt or concrete, whatever. And we will allow it to be to the, you know, start when the last two are constructed. You know, on the, the progress of it and we can put a timeline on it as well. And that would trigger it to be constructed and we can put a timeline on it for two years, three years, whatever. Uh, and at that point in putting a timeline, um, I would ask that we. Talk to have the owner address it as well again.
Do we have a timeline of what they're expecting on this build to take?
Well, everyone as I experienced, you know, is very cautious, but then when, once they get going, they're. Fairly surprised as we have one of the gentlemen here that. Built some storage and they're surprised at how fast things do progress. As for a timeline and all, like I said, we could talk to the owner about it again, who's here obviously. You know, if he feel, if if you feel comfortable with. Three years and and that's not to say that, let's say it stalls at the first one. You know, that we can always come back to planning commission, the owner can and say, look, guys, here's the, here's the honest truth, you know, what can we do?
Well, can't you also put a? If you put a physical date on it, can't you also ask them just to come back in and revisit it?
That's correct, that, yeah, that's what I was saying, we can just come back in.
Just come back and talk to us at that point in time, whether it's done or it's.
That's correct.
Needs to be pushed back or ask for, I mean, we can ask for whatever. On a physical timeline versus a building.
Right, that's correct. Mister Earhart.
How would you, how would you like that, how would you rephrase that then as far as the recommendation goes?
I would say, uh, that it would need to be, uh, installed within a two-year timeline. And then if that does not work with everyone, then it can be revisited.
My question is on the gates, is, do you know? The intentions of lock and key versus. Punch key, punch number?
I'll ask the applicant, are, are you gonna have a coded gate to get in and out?
Yes, that's my intention.
Fire would.
Oh, fire, right, yeah, fire department and they've also said that obviously they would like to have a. A key for that far one if it's not gonna have a coded and they also have chop saws. That's what they said, so.
So, looking at the other end, the one concern I had is that, you know, we're highly sensitive to the perception of Spring Hill. Especially when you're coming southbound on one sixty-nine highway, we just kinda noted that in the rezoning. Of how this is kind of out there, isolated on itself, on its own island. And on the very far west property line, when people come southbound on sixty-nine, there's gonna be six foot tall. Fence with barbed wire on the top of it. And that's gonna be their first view of Spring Hill, so I didn't know if. There would be an option of if you look at the landscape plan and the civil layout plan. Is if they could locate that six foot tall chain link fence or barbed wire on the other side of the twenty-foot utility easement. And put the landscape. On the other side so that when you're driving down, you see the landscape and the fences behind it.
That's easy to do, yeah.
I mean, that'll, that'll save you forty feet of linear, forty linear feet of fence too, so I mean, it's win-win, so.
And and.
Know it just kinda helps soften that as.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah.
So just make sure that we'll put that in there, although we'll have it in record.
Alright, I guess we're looking for a motion then?
I can't remember all that.
Landscape or barbed wire.
Be in the recommendation also.
You can say as duly noted, uh, pardon me?
Is it landscaping to be in the recommendation as well?
Uh, no, what we'll do is we'll have it changed and then I'll just send it out to you, I mean, you don't absolutely have to have it, they've agreed to it, so.
Do we have an idea of groundbreaking?
Yesterday would have been nice, but. I think the, I think March.
Yes, spring, we get the weather.
Is spring.
I just was thinking for the timeline, I mean, you don't wanna say two years from today if you're not gonna break ground for six months.
Okay, well, and you could just say three years and then, you know, we can revisit it.
I, I'm just thinking if you wanna attach two years from groundbreaking or something, I don't know.
So the, the thing I I like about this finding commission is that we can step outside the box. And literally say, okay, hey, we understand and that we might have to revisit this. And so by putting that on there, I'm not, you know, we're not afraid to come back and revisit it. And look at the true scenario of it, so.
All it means is. You have to come see us.
That's hard.
We're scary.
And that, I, that's, I mean, I just don't wanna be unfair to them with saying two years from to, from November versus. Six months later down.
Right, and I.
Can we do it like a three years and or when the, the start of the last two buildings?
Sure.
I mean.
Sure, and that's, that's a fair statement.
I mean, that, that gives them, cuz they may get there before then.
Sure.
Okay. So I, I guess I'll try to make a motion here and see if we can get everything covered. Okay. Move to recommend the approval of site plan SP thirty-six dash twenty twenty, one, one sixty-nine boat and RV mini storage. With the addition of within three years having the hard surface. Or and or the beginning of the last two buildings.
That's correct.
Landscape.
Yeah, we don't absolutely have to put that in there, that'll be just a change on the plan that the owner agreed to right now.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve site plan thirty-six twenty twenty, one sixty-nine boat, RV and mini storage. With the addition of a hard surface being built on the property within.
Three years.
Three years or, uh, when the last two buildings are constructed on the property. Uh, start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Alright, passes six zero.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, and that, uh, concludes our formal, uh, commission action, uh, we don't have, do we have anything in discussion?
Uh, no, just remember that. Items were approved with the city council was Woodland Ridge. And Bear Creek two and Bear Creek two. Is gonna have to comply with the. Uh, sidewalk, you know, I'm. So, uh, just so you know that the council did. Take your recommendation and they are going to have to. For you that don't remember, it's the sidewalk that would run east-west. And they are gonna have to put that sidewalk in. You know, uh, like, and the council said as well, you know, we have to start somewhere and and we have a strategic plan and. And there are funding to CIP and all that's gonna really start kicking in. And get some sidewalks going. They, just a, a little bit of catch-up here on the roundabout. Everything's ready to go on the roundabout except for one property, uh, and they're working on that. We have.
Hundred ninety-ninth street.
Hundred ninety-ninth street.
And Ridgeview.
And Ridgeview, yeah.
I just wanna make sure I know what you're on about.
Yeah, that's the only one we have built right now, but.
Just making sure.
Yep, no problem.
They've been doing some work out there, can you elaborate on what exactly, is it just utility?
Utility, yep, utility relocation, well, as well as in, um. Maybe you don't know, the Spark funding has, um, Kansas Fiber Net as well as RG Fiber, both. Running to town from the outskirts to get to town to serve the town with fiber. So both directions are coming right now, if you've been out Hillsdale Lake, it looks like a war zone. Up and down everywhere cuz there's so many fiber cables coming in. So there's some of that, but there is some utility relocation that is starting to take place. The, uh. Woodland Road did receive chip and seal, if you haven't been down it, it's chip and sealed from a hundred ninety-ninth to a hundred ninety-first now. Uh, the improvements at a hundred ninety-first and Ridgeview Corner. Uh, the materials were slated to be delivered yesterday, I did not check on them. Uh, so that work should start weather permitting in the next week, week and a half.
That's New Culverts.
Yes, on that corner. The, uh, work as you saw out here, taking care of the drainage problem here. It's been a big, um, concern to the residents across the street here, it started today. Other than that, we have an awful lot of, uh, development that's going on. If you haven't been through Oakwoods lately, um, Rouse Coleman, they're really going. I believe they have fourteen permits out.
Remind me?
Uh, it's behind the aquatic center.
That's what I was gonna say, down here.
Yes.
Really?
Yes. So it's, uh, if you get a chance, you might drive through there. Um, and it's starting to, and that works out really well for the city to get that going.
I did wanna ask about the gentleman that spoke at the very beginning about the roads.
Yes.
I, what are we doing for some of these roads? I mean, I know that we do have. Some legitimate issues with that.
And you're gonna love this. So right now, the city staff is in process of interviewing public work directors. And, um, as soon as they take the office, then that is, and it truly is. Number one priority, and it's not just, it's all the streets, you know, we all know that, all of us. Um, and so that is number one priority. Now, uh, Dan Miller is also, the city engineer is also working on the improvement plan for, um. Webster out here. Uh, there's been some different, uh, types of products that. They're trying to introduce on it, obviously, one of the problems is, you know, it's concrete. So you can't really chip and seal it to make it work correctly, U-Bass, I don't know. And I'm not a big U-Bass fan, so, but although I don't have anything to say about it, but. I, I've seen it fail here lately quite a bit, so they're looking into all kinds of, and what that is is like a real thin. Uh, almost, um, asphalt type that goes on top of it, it's supposed to be real strong.
Wasn't that what they were kinda, um, landing on with, when the council was talking about this last few times?
Yes.
For U-Bass?
Right, but there, uh, since then, there's been just a few other items that have been introduced. Well, one of the problems on the street obviously are, maybe you don't realize it, but that's all a monolithic pour. Those curbs are poured right in with the rest of it and there's no. Construction joining for things to move independently. Uh, so that's a, a problem. We're gonna have, uh. Quite a bit of stuff come up, uh, I would imagine next year, you know, we're getting so close to the end of the year and. Trying to squeeze things through and rush things through just to be doing it, it, you know, it just probably won't work. So.
Doing that, can we please not do it just for the sake of doing it and make sure that we're doing it? Correctly and not.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I just don't wanna rush things through on it.
Pack it on us and make sure that we're doing it.
Well, I didn't say I wasn't gonna pack it on you, but I said that we'll try and do it correctly.
But, but at the same token, a midnight meeting doesn't mean that we're doing it correctly.
No, and that's what I'm saying, uh, okay, so we're not gonna take everything that's built up and put it on January. It, it's not gonna happen that way, you know, because one reason, one thing for sure, I mean, staff's getting tired.
I bet you.
You know, uh, we, we're already short. We're already short-staffed, you know, and so, uh, and, and. But just because we have one person out, a key person. So hopefully they'll be back shortly.
Well, and, never mind.
No, and, but anyway, that's, that's the, and we're gonna have some. Pretty important site plans that'll be coming up before too long and some pretty important decisions that, you know, will. Probably what I'm, well, no, what I will do on these is I will send them out ahead of time. Like one month before the month that we're gonna look at it and then I'll give every, cuz there'll be some pretty important ones.
Back to the roads issue and I, I know what it's gonna be, but when we are doing some of these major repairs that. We know on some of these roads that are, are falling off and.
Yes.
Is there not any way that we can go ahead and do curbs and sidewalks?
Yeah, it, it's.
I know.
Sidewalks, I would think that we could look into that, but, you know, with the, the price of everything right now, I just don't think it's economically feasible.
But on the flip side, is it not where we, I mean, I don't know.
So here, here's, I mean.
On the other side, is it not feasible that we can't do it? I mean, is it, I mean, I know.
I understand, it, it gets more and more expensive. It does, but you also have to remember, sometimes you just have to live with designs of old times. Meaning that those subdivisions, those streets were put in with ditches. And to pipe them is just not feasible and I'm not saying cost or anything else, it might not run. Using a pipe system, so there are gonna be some areas that just will never get curbed. It's all there is to.
Do you think when we do the comp plan, there'd be an opportunity to explore like an alternative curbing system, whether it's, you know, dry curb with curb cuts? That drain into just an open ditch?
Right.
When you start to see these in more urban core areas, you know, where.
You do.
Have a, a curb and then just a curb cut. It drains into like a, a rain garden, if you will.
Yes, and also, um.
Thank you, Josh.
Well, and not only that, but, and I have a lot of notes and I, I didn't want, it's too close to the holidays for me just to start. Putting comp plan stuff on.
Right.
But one of the items that's on the comp plan review that I've put on is actually. Area detention basins. I mean. I'm so tired of having to have a detention basin on every ten acre tract. And it's, it's not attractive, it, it, sure, it serves a purpose, but if. It's more economical to take one area and do that, so that's something in the comp plan that I. Would hope that we would investigate and look into also.
See, start that, you see these green street initiatives, a lot of these urban cores and we could almost do that in more of our. Our older areas, if you will, cuz I, I totally agree and understand the infrastructure and the amount of cost that goes into that and it. I don't know if we'd see the return, but I think there is an opportunity to just take a different look at it and a new approach, still curb and gutter it, but. Take almost more of a green streets initiative where you still have ditches, but you still have curb and gutter.
It's modified.
Yeah, yeah, it's just like a daylight.
I saw, um, uh, my daughter lives east of the plaza and they went down, um, a lot of those roads there and. They put, uh, bicycle lanes, I don't know if any of you've been down there lately, but it's, it's really kinda neat, so I took some pictures of that. And I thought maybe we'd try and introduce that in and they took it, their wide streets back in the day when they built streets and. They took and just, um, put the permanent type markers along there that are white and striped it off for the bicycles and. Added a few little lights and things and it, what I was thinking about is the. Uh, a hundred ninety-ninth where it's wide right now and then maybe extend that on out when we're doing the rest of it. Uh, because I know. and then maybe extend that on out when we're doing the rest of it, uh, because I know Hundred ninety-ninth is used a lot by bicyclers also. So, it's a few things, and I'm kind of ex, well, I am excited about next year and getting started on the comp plan and, and actually get going on it.
I'm excited about getting sidewalks.
I think so, I mean, and, and that's true.
Sorry, I'm just not gonna get off that soapbox, we've gotta get.
No, we have to, um, it's really funny that I was reading a lot of these, and I went to a meeting a few weeks ago, and they said, uh, you know, what's one of the number one things that you can do to improve your city immediately, and it was walking trails in parks. Because I haven't heard anybody complain about putting in a new park. Unless they're off of the rock.
Um, I brought this, just kinda, here's here, I brought this up a few meetings ago, but that light industrial area by, between Woodland and the railroad tracks, and they don't have any fencing up. That was part of there.
Oh, yes, I did s, I did speak to the Dusselers and all about that, uh, the, um, and the other company. And they are working on that, they said, oh, we forgot, I think they were just waiting to see if anybody said anything. Um, they actually had in one of the garages there, a section that had been built by a fence company to show them what it looked like. So, I think they were just really waiting on us to jump up and down, so I did talk to them about that.
Yeah, I drive by them all the time, I'm always looking.
Mm-hmm, oh, did you see how many trucks they have now?
Oh, yeah, a couple.
It's full.
Their security right now is a couple stones with a little.
Right.
Rope.
I saw that.
Hanging across, I'm like, really, guys?
I was shocked when I drove down there and how many trucks they.
Oh, yeah.
Lot.
I just had no idea.
You can get a kid in there, fool around and, and get hurt, you know, someone's getting in trouble.
Yeah, shame on the parents.
So.
Apartment, uh, screening for dumpsters?
Uh, I haven't heard anything of you, from Trent on that? I, we better write that down, I better jump on that, cuz it, it really has been a whirlwind here, I'm sorry. I know that's not a good excuse, but.
Um, I wanted to bring up our, uh, recent addition to our bylaws, so we can make a recommendation for somebody who has not been attending. So, I wanted to see if we can have a discussion and a vote on sending a recommendation to the mayor to remove Mr. Denny from the board.
Would you like that on the agenda next month, or do you want to proceed with the meeting tonight?
I'd prefer that we don't wait, but it's everybody else too.
I'm fine for whatever, I can do it tonight as well.
Sure, that's.
Okay. Like I said, I was asked for, you know, I, I don't think I can give the motion.
No, you can.
Yeah.
So, order, uh, remind me what the bylaw said is.
You can just say that, uh, in accordance to the bylaws, that we recommend, and that way, if there's one little thing that we miss in street, which we have the bylaws.
Right.
It's, it's overall better to do just a generality that meets the bylaws.
So, we just need a motion to vote, is that what we're looking for?
Well, well, you're gonna look to.
Make a recommendation.
Recommendation to, um, I can't really make it for you, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, according to the bylaws.
I'd like to move that we make a recommendation to the mayor, that following our bylaws, we remove Mr. Denny from the board.
Second.
Alright, got a motion and a second to remove Mr. Denny based, or send the recommendation to the mayor based on our bylaws. Um, can a motion, or a vote start on the left?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Our motion passes six zero.
So, what we will do, Mr. Chairman, we will, uh, I will type that up. Um, I'll send it to you electronically, or Amy will. Um, and then if you can, um, sign it as chairman, and get it back to Amy, and then we will get it on the, uh, November twenty-fifth agenda, I'll see if the mayor will take it then, if not, it'll be on the first, uh, December meeting.
Okay.
And I say, the only reason I said, see if the mayor could take it then, is I already know these agendas are getting packed. So, and I know that shouldn't be a big deal, but it might actually be, uh, a lengthy conversation between, uh, council members. So, but we will definitely make sure it's either on the November or the first December meeting.
Thank you. Alright, anybody have any announcements, or? Alright, uh, you got a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, but on the left?
Aye.
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 Aye.